We're live.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Cagnetta, and this is the meeting of the South Kingstown Rhode Island zoning board of review. Members present tonight are Thomas Daniels, Vice Chairman, Richard Jerzak, William Mark, Bill Rosen, who's our alternate number one, and Casey Charcawick, who is our alternate number two. Also present are Jamie Gorman, the interim South Kingstown zoning building official, Amy Goines, the South Kingstown Special Legal Counsel, and Jessica Spence, who's the Administrative Support Associate. This board is made up of seven people, and five of them are regular voting members. Five members are required to be present for a vote. In the event that one of the five regular members is not present, an alternate will step in. Tonight, the voting members will be myself, Thomas Daniels, Richard Jerzak, William Mark, and Bill Rosen. Applicants are here either for a variance, dimensional, or a use, or to seek a special use permit. The board is a quasi-public, or quasi-judicial, excuse me, body, created by the South Kingstown ordinance pursuant to our state statutes. We don't follow strict rules of evidence, and we operate in what we believe to be in a fair and equitable manner. We try to let everyone speak unless they get a little carried away, or it's determined not to be relevant. So really, in the best interest of time, try to be on point and brief. We do our best not to argue and keep things civil, and we try to last, hear the last petition by 10 o'clock. When your petition is called, please, we'll give you instructions, but you're going to raise your hand, and Jessica will let you unmute you. And then you want to clearly state your name and spell it for the record. So you will be asked to take an oath to tell the truth. Then you can present your petition along with any other witnesses to testify in your support, which will, each will be sworn in. The board will then ask you or your witnesses questions. After the petitioner has presented their testimony, anyone else with questions about the application or wanting to support or oppose the petition will then be asked to step forward. They will identify themselves, be sworn in, and present their testimony, which may be followed up by questions by the board. Do not direct questions to the petitioner or the other witnesses. The board will allow the petitioner to answer questions raised by the audience and/or respond to comments add to the comment period. After hearing all the testimony and before a vote is taken, board members will be asked to openly discuss the evidence presented. So you're aware, variance or special units require four of five voting members to vote in favor of the petition for granting of the requested relief. Board members will ask a lot of questions for a good reason. We cannot just grant anything we choose. There are rules to follow per our ordinance. So you must give testimony, support certain facts to allow your request to be approved. Tonight, we have dimensional variances and special uses on the agenda. For a variance, you must offer evidence to the board setting forth the following. So these are the things that you need to support. That your hardship is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or the structure. And it isn't due to the characteristics. See, this contradicts itself. Okay. The hardship is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure, that the hardship is not the result of any prior action on your part, that the granting of the variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area, that the relief is the least relief necessary, that you must also show that your hardship will be suffered if it is not granted will amount to a more than a mere inconvenience. For a special use permit, you must present the following, that you are requesting, what you're requesting is authorized by our zoning ordinance, so it has to be justified by that somewhere in the ordinance, or we cannot grant it. The special use permit is requested, requested meets all the criteria set forth in our zoning ordinance that authorizes such a use, and that is listed in our ordinance. Granting of the special use will not alter the general characteristic of the area or impair the purpose or intent of the zoning ordinance. So those, those are the things that we'll be looking for and asking questions for. So at this time, I just wanted to make sure that folks knew how to be recognized. And Jessica, are you ready to tell them what to do?
Sure. So I know most of you were here last week, so this is going to seem a little repetitive. But what's going to happen is I'm going to put your videos on mute, on blank until it is your turn. So you won't be shown on the screen. When it comes your turn to speak, I am going to ask you to turn your video on and unmute you at that point. You'll give all testimony. And then if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak either for or against, at that point, they should raise their hand. If you're on your computer, there's a raise hand function. If you're calling in by phone, it is star nine to raise hand, star six to mute and unmute. They'll be allowed to give whatever testimony they want to give, and then at that point, the applicant will be allowed to speak again if the chairman feels that it's appropriate. A couple of other things to keep in mind. The agenda and all the supporting documents are available online at southkingstownri.com. And if you were to search under the, the heading of current zoning applications, you'll find everything there. There is a question and answer function. It should be noted that this function is only to be used if you're having a technical issue. No questions regard, in regards to any petitions will be answered on that forum. And then, that again, the, the big thing is if you're calling in by phone, it's star nine to raise your hand, star six to mute and unmute. That's it.
Thank you, Jessica. And so everyone knows, anything that you have submitted is available digitally, and if you like, you can ask Jessica to put it on the screen for us if you wanted to refer to that. So if there isn't any other anything else that we need to get to, then I guess we can start with the first petition. Is someone here for Jeffrey Green?
Jeffrey Green is here. I think there he is.
Okay, great. So this is the petition of Jeffrey Green, 782 Mooresfield Road, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, 02879. For a special use permit under the zoning ordinance as follows, the applicant is seeking to convert an existing single-family dwelling into a three-guest-room bed and breakfast. The bed and breakfast will include limited events accessory to the principal use. The planning board advisory development plan review was granted on June 23, 2020. Lot size is three acres. The special use permit is required per our ordinance. Section 301 Schedule of Use Regulations and 907 Standards of Relief. The owners of the property are Jeffrey and Christine Green for the premises located at 782 Mooresfield Road, South Kingstown, Rhode Island. Accessory map 17-3, lot 6, and is zoned R80. And for this petition, we have the application and narrative with the addendum signed and dated September 3. We have the owner authorization form signed and notarized September 2, 2020. The site plan dated March 1, 2020. And construction documents, a 1.1, a 1.2, and a 2.1, prepared by Frank Karpowitz Architects, Inc., dated June 24, 2020. Radius map, which is the 200-foot a butter's list, legal notice and certified mailing receipts with affidavit of mailing. And that is it for a document list. So who is here? Mr. Green?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Could you please spell your name?
Yes, Jeffrey Green, J-E-F-F-R-E-Y-G-R-E-E-N-E.
And do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Green. And I'm very excited to hear this. I'm excited to hear this property being used. So go ahead, Mr. Green.
We are too, and actually, we were very encouraged reading the ordinance. I think it begins off, begins with a bit of a preamble about using historic properties this way and how it's economically beneficial to the town. We certainly agree with that. So we are interested in a, we're applying for a special use permit as required by Article 3, Section 301. Bed and breakfast, up to 12 rooms. We have three. Bed and breakfast, I should probably explain, is really not accurate. I think a better name would be guest accommodations. We are not going to be preparing or serving food because that puts us under the purview of the Rhode Island State Health Department and having a certified kitchen, and it's not something we want to do anyhow. So unlike a lot of people who appear before you, we don't want to change anything about the building or the property at all. The way the floor plan is laid out, it is very well suited for guest accommodations. We have, if you look at the floor plans, we have one large sing, one large room that has a private bath, and then we have two adjoining rooms that has its own private bath. So the layout of the house is very well suited to this. As far as the details of section 504.9, I think we're in compliance with all the articles there. Beginning with A, the house and lot size, we were supposed to have 500 square feet ground for living area for each guest room, and that would be 1,500 square feet total. We have over 2,000. As far as the lot size goes, the property has over, with three acres, it has 130,000 square feet, and we're in an R80, 80,000 square foot area zone. Parking for guest accommodation use, one parking space is required for every three persons. Three rooms times two people is six, so that would be a parking place for two cars, and we actually have room for seven pretty easily. The the other thing is accessory events, which is just sort of part of the guest accommodation business. We don't intend to use this as an event venue. We talked about this quite a bit with the planning department. It's kind of part of the guest accommodation business if we were to, if a guest who was staying here wanted to have some kind of event, like a graduation party or some kind of family gathering. We do have room for it. We have a place for it that's pretty isolated. And we have parking. If you stack up the parking, actually, planning, planning suggested a parking arrangement where we could stack up, oh, gosh, over a dozen cars. I think there are 15 here. So we could have an event that had 45 people. And if we wanted to, we don't, we don't have the facilities for that, but it's, you know, an eventuality. So it's something we needed to take into consideration. That really pretty much covers everything to do with the house. The planning department wants to make sure that no parking was ever going to be allowed on the street, and we wouldn't. I mean, that would be strictly prohibited. So as far as any kind of event goes, they would be limited to 12 a year, once a month, if that, you know, I actually doubt we have any at all. But in the eventuality that people do want some kind of a gathering here, we would limit it to that. So that's pretty much the, that's pretty much everything we have to say.
Right, and Mr. Green, so when you talk about these events, how many folks are you anticipating?
Well, it would be, it's based on the number of cars that can park here. And if you can park 15 cars here at three people per car, it would, a maximum of 45 people for an event. You know, with the stipulation that if there's anything like music, it wouldn't be heard off the property. This is not something, you know, this is not a place that we want to use as a an event venue. So this is something that we have to take into consideration, but not anything that we want to actually promote.
Have you spoke with your neighbors?
Yes, we have. Yes, and actually, we're right next to the farmer's daughter, and even though that's a zoned residential, that's one of the biggest retail commercial establishments around. Across the street, we have Landscape Creations, and that's also zoned residential, but there's all kinds of earth-moving equipment, making noise, all kinds of hours of the day and night. Our nearest neighbor to the west is very encouraged by what we're doing here, and we want to certainly be very considerate to her. There is a place that we, on the site, on the site plan, there is an area that we designated for some kind of little gathering area. And it's actually out of the line of sight of our neighbor's house. It's actually behind the existing garage, so it really can't be seen by, by anyone.
But, and I was going, is, is, is there a difference between calling it guest accommodations versus a bed and breakfast? Does he have to serve breakfast in order for this to fit?
Remember that this, this is Amy Goins, Legal Counsel, Rob, and I'm not sure if anyone else will remember. You remember this issue came up with the farmhouse by the sea, right? And, and they were indicating they weren't a bed and breakfast because they don't cook and serve food. The answer is that that, that definition, that part of the definition isn't a deal breaker. It's still considered a bed and breakfast based on their planned business operations.
Fair. Okay. Just wanted to make sure. I'm sure we've gotten this far. Board members, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, Rick Jerzak here. Okay. Mr. Green, what about the septic situation?
What, oh, we have a brand-new septic system that we put in about a year and a half ago.
Okay, and that is for what, a three-bedroom?
No, it's a four-bedroom.
Four-bedroom septic system. How about trash removal? Will, will, will there be additional and a necessity for dumpsters or anything like that?
Oh, I can't imagine there being a dumpster. I think everything that needs to be removed, I remove as needed. We don't want garbage piling up here. So now I can't imagine there being, you know, any need for anything beyond residential.
Okay, so this is residential typical. And the last thing, I'm concerned a little bit. I don't know if you've been following the, the whole pump house saga in town with the exterior music.
Oh, I have not.
And when we authorized that thing, it really never was anticipated that there would be the type of music in the area going on. What, what are you, what are you talking about in these accessory events? You talk about music that won't leave premises. Okay, so what, what kind of music will there be?
Well, this would be, I mean, if we were to have an accessory event, it would be at the request of someone who is staying here. And as I said, it would be something very small scale. A graduation party, a family gathering, you know, it would not be a music event. It would not be, it would not be a concert of any kind. It would just essentially be background music. We, yeah, we don't want to bother people. So it's not, you know, it's not a musical performance per se, but it would just be background music. So and, and we would make sure that it's not, you know, it's not something that's going to be heard beyond, you know, beyond our grounds, beyond our property lines, and, you know, certainly not anything that could be heard at a neighbor's house. You know, I should say that we do have a wedding venue right next door. The farmer's daughter has a wedding venue way out back. You know, and that's where weddings are held. We hear it from time to time, but it's just part of living in the neighborhood.
And what about signage? What are you going to have for a sign?
No, well, I would say it's more, if we do have a sign, of course, it would have to be within the, you know, the boundaries of the sign ordinance. More of an acknowledgement that you've arrived at the right place than an advertisement. We actually do have a small sign. It's probably about, oh, maybe two square feet on the front of the house right now that just says that it's the Daniel Rodman House and has the date that it was built and has our names on it. So whatever kind of sign that we did have would be extremely small.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board members' questions?
Yeah, this is Bill Rosen. I'm just curious. You said it's the Daniel Rodman House. When was the house built?
1841 was the original part of the house, and then it was added on to in 1869.
And has it been refurbished on other occasions?
Yes, I mean, it was in, actually, if you look at the vision appraisal picture of this house, it looks pretty hideous. It was covered with aluminum siding. It didn't have the porch on the front. And then beginning about, I think about 2006, the owners did a massive renovation on it. It was, they were close to bulldozing it. They were going to bulldoze the house and put in three house lots. But there was a president, preservationist in the family, and he wanted to do a renovation on it. They peeled off the aluminum siding, and underneath was the original clapboards. And from all photographs, they rebuilt the porch on the front, and they found granite posts in the front, in the front yard that showed them exactly where the original porch was. So that was rebuilt. And so it's gone back to its original 1869 appearance. So all the cosmetic work was done, and, you know, modern electrical system and heating and all that. So it's really been brought up to very modern standards. The work that we've done has mostly been cosmetic, and we've, we have furnished it in the period of the 1850s. So staying here is, is appealing to history enthusiasts. It's a, it's a historic experience more than anything else.
Thank you.
Any other board members' questions? Sorry. Okay, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this petition?
Again, if you raise your hand. See, there's one person on phone. It would be star nine to raise your hand, star six to mute and unmute. No one has raised their hand, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Mr. Green, you mentioned the zoning board, or the planning board's findings of facts and conditions of approval. There weren't any specific conditions that they came up with outside of seeking approval from this board and, and getting permits, so they didn't recommend any other restrictions relative to the approval. So it doesn't seem like that they had any other concerns. So if board members, any other questions, or how's everybody feeling about this?
No problem with it.
No problem. Okay. Is there anyone that would care to make a motion in behalf of Mr. Green?
Okay, I'll make a motion, Rick Jerzak. Okay. Make a motion to approve the petition of Jeffrey. Let's see, it's in it, wife's name as well, Jeffrey and Christine Green, okay? With their guide premises located at 782 Mooresfield Road, South Kingstown, Rhode Island. Okay? The Greens are asking us to approve a special use permit to allow them to operate a bed and breakfast, a three-bedroom bed and breakfast. Mr. Green has come today and testified. He explained what he would like to do. He further gave us some background on the historic nature of the building. Okay? He stated that no work really would have to be done whatsoever because the premises is in such safe shape that it could be immediately utilized as a three-bedroom bed and breakfast. Okay? He stated there would be no food preparation on site. They would be, I guess, serving some type of outside-made food. He told us all about parking. He told us about the septic system. The planning board has given positive development plan review on this. And as our good chairman stated, they made no specific conditions with regard to their approval. Okay? I would like to make as part of my motion that planning board approval, okay? No one spoke, other than Mr. Green, no one spoke in favor or in opposition to the petition. Okay? This granting would be based upon section 301, okay, Use Code 40, which allows a bed and breakfast of up to 12 rooms. The Greens are only asking for three rooms, okay? As well as section 504.9 of the ordinance, bed and breakfast uses. Okay? All right, I would like to point out that due to those, those two parts of the ordinance, okay? The special use permit is specifically authorized. All right? With regard to section 504.9, Mr. Green has very ably and succinctly set out that they have met all the requirements with regard to section 504.9 with regard to square footage, okay? With regard to of the house itself, square footage of the lot, okay? He set out in great detail the parking requirements as set out in said ordinance, okay? And showed that he has met all of those requirements, okay? He stated that the rooms will be occupied by two people per room plus children. All right? He then went into some detail with regard to accessory events stating that they did not intend this to be a venue for outside events, but they would allow guests on occasion, if they requested them, okay, to have events. And he went into great detail as to the requirements of said events. Okay? I would like to make part of the record, all right, a part of my motion, okay? Obviously, his application is already in there. He, he had a, in, in his application, he has a, a description of what he would like to do with regard to the premises, and it pretty much recites everything that I just mentioned. Okay? I would like to make a part of the motion, the site plan. Okay? I'm not sure I have the whole site plan here, but it's site plans dated March 1, 2020. Okay? I would also like to make as part of this motion, okay? There's an aerial photo, okay, of 782 Mooresfield Road, which shows the parking possible with regard to accessory events. I would further like to make part of this motion, the plans, floor plans of the house, the first floor, the second floor. Okay? And as I stated, I would like the planning board's approval to be made part of this motion. Okay? All right, in conclusion, all right, I would ask that this petition be granted, okay? Because pursuant to section 907A2, Mr. Green has shown that it is specifically authorized by ordinance, that it meets all criteria in said ordinance, all right? And then it will not alter the general character of the surrounding area. He went into great depth as to who his surrounding neighbors were and what type of activities were carried on on these different premises. Okay? He talked about parking. He talked about trash. He told us about utilities. Told us he has a four-bedroom septic system, which was just replaced. Told us about signage. And it would seem that this use would be generally compatible with the area. Okay, and it would help a historic house, okay, survive in its present state. Okay? All that being said, I ask that this motion be granted, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Jerzak. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosen. Any other discussion? No, Mr.? No, Mr. Jurzak?
Hi.
Mr. Rosen?
Hi.
Mr. Daniels?
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Mark?
Hi.
And myself, I've motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, next, we have Linda Jean Briggs. Linda here?
Yep, I am.
Excellent. So this is the petition of Linda Jean Briggs, seventy-seven Acadia Street, Dexter, Maine, zero four nine three zero for a special use permit under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to construct a hundred and forty-four square foot addition, a hundred and forty-four square foot covered deck and a forty-foot square, forty-square-foot open deck attached to their seasonal cottage. The owner is allowed an increase of a hundred and fifty square feet of living area to the existing size. And the proposed deck is under the two hundred square feet allowed under this ordinance. The proposed addition will be no closer to any other neighboring cottages. The lot size is fifty point two acres. Special use permit is required per zoning ordinance section six zero eight point seven. Changes to coastal community structures allowed by the zoning board in section nine oh seven, which is our standards of relief. The owner of the cottage eleven W eight is Linda Jean Briggs on the property owned by Matunik Beach Properties located at two forty Cards Pond Road, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, assessors map ninety-two dash one, lot nine dash three four seven, and is zoned R two hundred. And with this petition, the application we have for submitted documents, the application signed and dated September third, twenty twenty. Owner, owner authorization form signed and notarized August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. Site plan dated March first, twenty twenty, the existing floor plan, proposed floor plan, existing site plan and proposed site plan and the elevations. Also, we have a radius map, the two hundred foot of Butters list, legal notice and certified mailing receipts and affidavit of mailing. So Ms. Briggs, please tell us what you'd like to do. First, sorry, first spell your name and I, and I can swear again.
Sure. Linda Jean Briggs. It's spelled L I N D A hyphen J E A N B R I G G S.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, is anybody else gonna speak or just yourself?
My contractor is with me, Ken Galleyas.
Okay. Do you wanna? Yeah, yeah, Ken, could you spell your name, please?
It's Ken Galleyas, G A L Y A S.
Okay, and you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, great. And Ms. Briggs, fine. Do you want to just say Briggs or is it Jean Briggs? Your, is your first name Linda Jean?
Um, Linda Jean. Call me LJ.
LJ, okay, LJ, tell us what you'd like to do.
So I'm, I'm probably one of the longer running folks down there. I've just finished my fifty-seventh year at, at Roy Copperton's beach. My family has owned a place down there for that length of time. And my sister is still in the family home. We have a number of other relatives that have since purchased homes. So as it has always been a community, it continues to be. It just happens to be, my maiden name is Kennedy. There just happens to be more Kennedys around than there were ever before. We keep expanding and as a result of that, in my cottage, which is very tiny, I, I wanted to put an expansion on specifically so that I could have a kitchen. As it stands right now, I, my, my sink and my stove are along the wall that exists. And I have probably three feet of prep space within the whole kitchen. I'd like to expand it and, and primary use for the, the addition will be to have an adequate kitchen to support our extended family, which which recreates down there. As far as the porch is concerned, it's, I, I would like it to be covered. It does face west. So we have some beautiful sunsets. However, in the afternoon, as you can well imagine, there's some significant heat generated by the sun. So a covered porch would be helpful to offset that, but still allow us to enjoy the sunsets overlooking the marsh. And, and so that's, that's the why we've requested the, the the closed or rather the, the covered porch. The existing open porch, we intend to put our grill there so as to minimize smoke underneath the covered porch, that type of thing. So it's pretty straightforward. We do not interfere with, with any of our neighbors, as you can tell by the, the proposed. The, the the only change to distance to our neighbors or the only change to distance is to the road. And directly across the street from that road, and I don't know if you have it on satellite or not, but directly across the street is an open, an open field which will never be built on because of, you know, because of the dip down into it. So, go ahead.
No, I was gonna ask, so the, or I, I should ask our building official. So a covered deck, is that considered a deck?
Yes, Chairman, that would be considered treated as a deck rather than gross living floor area. But yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, board members, any, any questions for, is that it? LJ?
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. And Ken is here as well for anything that might, any technical questions you might ask.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Tom Daniels, just a question for the building official. So this, this petition does not increase, ask for an increase in the living area. Is that correct?
It does. The addition would be an increase in living area, but it is within the allowable increase.
Okay, so, so I'm looking at the petition. So it's a hundred and forty-four square feet addition and then another hundred and forty-four square foot covered deck? Or am I misreading that?
No, that is correct. That's, that's.
Yeah, it's eight by eighteen addition and then eight by eighteen covered deck and a five by eight non-covered deck. So that would add up to one hundred and forty-four for the living area.
And the same for the deck, I guess. Okay.
I'll just double check, one hundred and eighty-four for the deck.
Okay, got it.
I, I have a Rick Jurzak here, Mr. Chairman. I have a follow-up for Mr. Daniel's question. I don't know, I'm, I'm reading six oh eight seven B with regard to decks. I'm assuming that's where the deck falls in here because this is not living area. It's sex decks allowed by special use permit. And in parentheses, it says unenclosed and unroofed. What is that? How does, how does, if we have a roofed deck, then it doesn't seem to fit into there. So how are we building the deck? That would lead me to believe that the deck would be considered living space.
Yeah, it, it doesn't differentiate. It does say unenclosed and unroofed and limited to fifty percent. Yeah, there's definitely a conflict there.
Mr. Chairman, can we ask Amy for her opinion on that or?
Yeah, of course.
I, I'm, this is Amy. I'm, I'm looking at that right now and trying to recall how we've dealt with that in the past because we know that, we know that the applicants are permitted to convert porches to enclosed the living space.
I had thought we weren't, Mr. Chairman, I think if you recall, in these, in the past, were we not authorizing covered decks?
Yes, and that, that's kind of why I asked the question. Because I know in the past, we did treat a covered deck as enclosed space.
Right.
Although I didn't know if this was another case of us looking at it a little different, perhaps, based on who is looking at it.
The, um, so the baseline footprint for gross livable floor area under six oh eight four A, it references the two thousand field card, but the figure does not include covered or unenclosed open air porches. So if somebody were to do an open deck, that's, is it prohibited in any section?
An open deck isn't prohibited. I think the question is a covered decks, which we, which have typically been considered living space. Right? And, and I think Mr. Jurzak is right that um, the decks that we can allow by special use permit must be unenclosed, unenclosed and unroofed.
Uncovered?
Can you, I don't know if I'm muted or not. If I could just interject, my next door neighbor, if you look at the proposed, the proposed layout, that includes distances to the, to the various other cottages. The one that is Mark Diggins, I would say within that, within that last ten or fifteen years has a covered porch in the same direction as the one that I'm looking to do.
Okay. Yeah, the, the issue has been is
five years ago.
It, it depends on how they expanded. If they didn't expand living space but cover the deck, then they could have done it. So I think we're just trying to make sure that we're consistent in, in, in our.
Mr. Chairman, this You know, you made, this is, this is Tom Daniels. Maybe the contractor, Mr. Galleyas can, can help us here. Is this just a, when you say covered deck, is it just a roof over the deck or is it enclosed on all sides or? Cause we don't really have a drawing that shows us essentially what the covered deck is. Can you, can you tell us what your plan is?
Right, it would be, it would be a deck with a roof over it and probably a waist-high rail.
Okay. No, no solid walls all the way around?
No.
Just the roof over the deck?
Correct.
With railings. Okay.
Yes.
All right.
This is Amy, legal counsel, Jamie. So given that the GLFA states that unenclosed and unenclosed decks and porches are not included in GLFA, would you consider that waist-high enclosure? If, I guess the question is, what constitutes an enclosed deck?
I think any wall.
All right, so they would have to ditch the waist-high deal and just, just put a roof over it?
Agreed.
Okay.
I, I doubt that would meet code with Mr. Gorman.
Well, if they're, sorry.
Sorry, Chairman.
Mr. Gorman, why don't you tell what the core code is rather than me?
Can you, LJ, can you tell me how high off the, off of grade the deck surface would be?
Yeah, on the front side, I think those are, I think you have that information, but let me go back.
If it's over thirty inches, you're gonna be required to have guards, whether it be open guards or, you know, we're trying to steer away from any kind of knee wall, but there's gonna have to be some form of guard.
I know what the, at the front, the, the, the front roadside or the, the southern part of the building itself, where at you probably only eight inches off the ground and towards the back per house, two feet, two and a half feet.
That would be right on the line of code compliance, two and a half feet, eight inches is.
Right. I, and I know we have those. I have provided those elevations.
Yeah, on elevation, it doesn't show any kind of knee wall or.
Okay.
The elevations are up on the screen.
So on the hand draw.
So without, without having railings or knee walls, does this comply with what, what we need to do to put a roof on it? Because a, a second and another, another idea, if we're within thirty inches or close to it, I could possibly build that grade slightly. If that is gonna move us away from having to call it an enclosed porch.
If we are making a ruling, we may put the condition that, or we will put the condition that you cannot have railings. And if you're not gonna have railings, then you'll have to be less than the thirty inches that they require. Okay. Or they're gonna make it put on railings and take off the roof.
Right, that answers that.
So I think, you know, it'll just be a condition of it and, and they'll verify it once it's completed. And if you did need to modify, you could always do less than you asked for. If, if the roof is approved and everything, you don't have to put it on if you feel like your grade is gonna be off. Does it make sense?
It does. It looks like we're two feet, two point two five feet.
If you're looking at that elevation view slide, just below the title of that slide, it's all handwritten. I apologize for that. But you can see the land gradient. And so the front is what I refer to as the south side. That's to your right. And that's about a foot. And then in the back, it's two and a quarter feet.
Okay.
Two, two, five. Oh, perfect. Okay. Very good. So, Mr. Gorman, you, you, you would be satisfied with that? If there are no railings, they're under the thirty inches? That means they can put a roof on the section that they've identified?
Yes, I would.
Okay, great. Who's going to, you have any issue with that? Does that seem to be consistent with our ordinance?
That's consistent.
Thank you. Board members, any other questions?
Yeah, Bill Rosen, I have a one question. The open porch that you're proposing, it looks like it's three and a half feet from the corner of where the road goes around. And I have a question for Jamie. Is that within proper distance or is that too close?
Because it's, it's called a road, but it's actually right of way. I don't know the actual measurement of the pavement to pavement edge. But because it's a turn, that could be an issue, but I don't believe there's anything on the other side of the road if, say, a fire truck were trying to make that turn. But code-wise, there, there would be no code issue, but, you know, a big truck taking a tight turn, that may be an issue.
Okay. Thank you.
I did speak with, if I may, I did speak. I did speak with, if I may, I did speak with
Yeah, please.
property owners about, just about that. Um, and they were not concerned with, with that particular corner. Um, they think that there's adequate space to maneuver and, um, and so, you know, they said, go ahead and ask for it. Um, they're fine with it. There are other people who have, who have built much closer to the road, actually. Um, but again, because of that corner, I specifically went to them and they said it should not be a problem. Um, they have to get in there in the wintertime to plow. And again, it's not an issue and the plowing is for emergency personnel that may need to, may need to access in the wintertime. So, and we have trucks going up and down those roads all the time. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, Ms. Green, what, what is, what is on the other side of the road? Is that just a field in there?
Yes, that's a field. Actually, if you look at where Diggins is and maybe about seventy feet away, eighty feet away is a community, um, bathroom directly in line with the Diggins house, so it'd be diagonal, you know, diagonal to me. But that's the only structure, um, that's on the other side of, of that road. Everything else is field. It's used as a parking field and as you're, you may or may not be aware, um, all of the parking lots in, in Roy's are grass-covered lots.
So that's a, that's a parking field, okay. So a fire truck could easily get in there.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Is that good, Mr. Rosen? You good?
That's it.
Mr. Chairman, a question for, uh,
Yes, Mr. Daniels.
Tom Daniels.
Please.
So without the railings or without sidewalls, but a hundred and forty-four square foot covered deck then would not, is, am I understanding it correctly, would not be considered living space?
Yeah, so this is Amy. Uh, so the issue is that living space is defined as, um, porches, stairs, ramps or decks that are covered and enclosed. So right, the, the sentence says living space excludes covered, unenclosed porches, stairs, ramps or decks. So if it's covered and enclosed, then it's considered living space.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other questions, board members? Okay. Um, LJ, you have anybody else that you wanted to talk about this?
Uh, no, I don't, I, I think it, I'm hopeful that it stands for itself and
Okay.
um, looking to get ready to get moving on it.
Very good. Um, okay. And, uh, is there anyone out there that wishes to speak on behalf of this petition? Is there anyone out there, Jessica?
No one has raised their hand.
Okay, and there were no, uh, letters or anything other than the authorization, um, you know, opposing or anything like that. Um, okay. How's everybody feel about this? Anyone, uh, have any thoughts or wish to make a motion perhaps?
Yeah, I'll do it. If there's no comments, I'll be happy to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels.
Motion to approve the petition of Linda Jean Briggs up there in Dexter, Maine, where probably some snow on the ground right now for property, property owned, uh, by Matunic Beach Properties. And this particular, uh, a piece of property is known as Cottage eleven W eight. And LJ Briggs is, uh, the owner of this, of this, um, property. She did speak on behalf of herself, uh, on the petition and she's accompanied by Ken Gallega, uh, Gallius, G A L Y A S, Gallius. Uh, the contractor who spoke briefly about the construction of the, uh, of the deck and the, uh, the covered deck. There was no op- opposition to this request and the materials that were entered into the record have been previously identified by the chairman and basically they consist of several drawings of what the, uh, petitioner is going to do with the addition of a hundred and forty-four square feet, uh, encompassing a new kitchen and, uh, other area. And also the hundred and forty-four square, uh, foot deck, which will be covered but will not be enclosed and will not be considered living space. In addition to that, there is a forty-foot open deck, uh, that Ms. Briggs will, um, be, be constructing. Uh, other than that, the application seems to be, seems to be in order and, uh, the board finds that this specific special use is specifically authorized by the ordinance under section six oh eight point seven, which allows the zoning board to approve changes to coastal community structures. And this is located in a coastal community structure and in property more commonly known as, uh, Roy Carpenter's. The board finds that this special use meets all of the criteria set forth in a subsection of this ordinance, which authorize such special use because uh, we're not exceeding any gross living area with the addition. It's within the, the bounds of, uh, what the ordinance calls for and that it is not, uh, encroaching upon any, uh, properties nearby or is not, uh, extending the, the, uh, uh, the, uh, not extending the, uh, the distance between any, uh, of, of the other cottages on the property. The board finds that the granting of a special use permit will not alter the general character of the surrounding area. This is a coastal community. It has a number of small cottages and small homes on the property. And what the, what the applicant is doing is entirely, uh, in compliance and in the, uh, character of the surrounding area. Ingress and egress to the lot are, is not a problem, you know, in that there is a, is a road or right of way in front of and on the side of this particular, uh, location. There is no, uh, requirement for off-street parking or loading areas. There are no issues with trash and storage and delivery, do, delivery areas. I believe the application indicates that the, uh, uh, applicant will be, uh, removing an old-style septic and be tying into the, uh, community system. And that's, um, that was part of her, uh, application as well. The, uh, utilities are in place and will not be any addition uh, necessary for utilities. There's no screening and buffering required. There's no signs or exterior lighting having to do with this special use permit. And the gen- she is certainly in general compatibility with the lots in the area. And, uh, because she has indicated that, uh, several of the other, uh, uh, cottages in the area have been modified in recent years and decks added to. And, uh, this particular applicant is in compliance with the ordinance in that regard. There are no, uh, conditions, uh, that we will put on this, uh, approval uh, with the exception that the, the applicant has agreed that the, uh, hundred and forty foot, uh, forty-four square foot covered deck will not have, excuse me, not have any enclosures with regard to knee walls, walls and/or railings. And with that, I would move passage.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Um, can I get a second?
Second, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mark. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, Mr. Daniels?
Hi.
Mr. Mark?
Hi.
Mr. Jerzak?
Hi.
Mr. Rosen?
Hi.
Mr. Cognita, I, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, LJ. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next we have the petition of William Harvey. Is someone here for? Someone here for Mr. Harvey? Yes. Um, so this is the petition of William Harvey of seventy-seven Quarry Road, Bridgewater, Connecticut, zero six seven five two. For a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows, the applicant is seeking to elevate the existing dwelling five and a half feet in the same location. The existing south side deck will become detached and the two hundred and twenty-four square foot west side deck will be removed and replaced. The north side, uh, dwelling and deck do not currently meet the side yard dimensional setback. The side yard setback is ten feet. The west side deck will be eight point one feet from the side property line and the dwelling will be eight point five feet from the west side of the property line. Relief of one point nine feet is requested. The lot size is six thousand eight hundred and thirty-two square feet. The dimensional variance is required per our zoning ordinance, section four zero one, schedule of dimensional regulations and section nine zero seven, standards of relief. The owner of the property is William A. Harvey for premises located at two Peninsula Road, South Kingston, Rhode Island, zero two eight seven nine. Assessors map ninety-three dash one, lot seventy, and is zoned R twenty. Um, and tonight for Mr. Harvey or, um, yes, for Mr. Harvey, we have, uh, for documents, we have the application that's signed and dated August twelfth, twenty twenty. The owner authorization form signed and notarized August twelfth, twenty twenty. Proposed site plan prepared by Michael A. Fontaine, PLS, dated June twenty-third, twenty twenty. We also have a radius map, a two-hundred-foot of butters list, the legal notice and certified mailing receipts and an affidavit of mailing. Uh, Mr. Harvey?
Uh, I think that Jeff was gonna introduce me. I don't know what happened to him.
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here.
Are you want to start or you want me to?
Yeah.
Jeff?
I'll be, I'll be glad to start.
Okay, uh, Mr. Balch?
Yep.
Please tell us who you are.
Yes, my name is Jeff Balch. I'm a professional land surveyor, um, collaborating with Mike Fontaine regarding the applications for this project.
Great. Could you spell your last name, please?
Yes, the last name is Balch, B A, B is boy, A L C H.
Okay, and now do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great, please go ahead.
Okay, um, this is an existing substandard lot of record in an R twenty zoning district. Uh, as you said, it was a small lot, contains sixty-eight hundred square feet. Um, there is a, uh, let me see, my notes just got covered up. Um, let's see if I can get that back. And it's, uh, what they're proposing to do is elevate the building to be FEMA compliant. And there is a small room in the back of the property, on the back of the house that is in poor shape and it's not likely to, to, uh, survive being lifted. So what the Harvies are proposing to do is, is, uh, remove that small, uh, room, it's fourteen by sixteen approximately. Replace it after the building is elevated and then add a second floor over that room. The existing house is already a two-story house, so this would just be, um, in compliant with the rest of the building. The existing, uh, house is, as you stated, is not compliant with his setbacks to the north property line. The proposed addition and second story addition are, um, going to be in the same footprint as what's there now. There's an existing, um, uh, second floor deck over the first floor, uh, that's gonna be removed. That second floor deck is gonna be permanently removed and, and converted to a, uh, uh, a second floor. So it's a fairly, fairly straightforward, um, um, thing. There's no changes in the number of bedrooms. The sewage system's already there. There's no changes in parking. There's no changes in footprint. Um, so, and the building will be compliant for, for building height. So I mean, I'll entertain for some questions, but as I says, it's a fairly simple and straightforward, uh, request on the part of the owner.
And, um, so why are they, uh, lifting the house?
Because right now the, the, the building is not compliant with FEMA. Um, it's, the first floor is well below the base flood elevation and so they wanna make it compliant with FEMA.
And, uh, you're not gonna have any, uh, there's no height issue, uh, after it's raised?
No, there's no height issue, none at all.
Uh, board members, any questions for?
So, yeah, the ball is Tom Daniels, uh, you, you just seeking relief of one point nine, uh, feet on the, uh, uh, on the west side, that's it, right?
Yeah, actually, the north side.
Okay, on the north side?
Yes.
Okay. That's it. That's all the relief you need, right?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Rosen, did you have a question? Was that you?
Uh, well, I do have one question. The one point nine feet, is that already there?
Yes, it is.
So the, the footprint is not changing at all?
The footprint's not changing.
So the relief is just from the fact that you're going up five and a half feet?
Well, we're going up five and a half feet and we're adding the second floor over that fourteen by sixteen foot, uh, first floor room. So we are adding a second floor over that one section of the building.
Okay, okay. That's all.
Any other board members' questions? No? Okay. Um, Mr. Ball, is anyone else, uh, do you want to have?
And Mr. Harvey may want to speak on his behalf.
Okay. Mr. Harvey, you still there?
I'm here.
Okay, uh, could you please, uh, spell your name for us?
W I L L I A M, Harvey, H A R V E Y.
Okay, and you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please go ahead, sir.
Um, Jeff covered it off pretty well and I won't take any more of your time. The only thing that, uh, it's not desirable to, uh, demolish that uh, back room, but we have, because it has a shed roof with a deck over it, we've taken on a lot of water and we have, uh, a pretty serious mold condition, so, um, that's why we're going ahead with the plan to demolish and replace that. And when we get done with that, we're gonna have a roof that won't leak.
Bonus. Uh, okay, um, great. Uh, so does anyone have any questions on, uh, for Mr. Harvey? No? All right. Uh, Jessica, is there anyone out there that, uh, would wish to speak in behalf, on behalf of this petition?
No one has their hand raised.
Okay, so, um, seems pretty straightforward. You're keeping the same footprint. Uh, you are expanding, um, the floors, but you're keeping the same footprint. Um, so seems pretty straightforward. Is there anyone that wants to, uh, make a motion?
Just, uh, one further question, Tom Daniels.
Please.
If the footprint is the same and the, uh, side yard setbacks are the same and the testimony was that he, uh, is one point nine feet currently, wh- why are we here with this?
This is Amy. Jamie, isn't this the one you asked me about? Yeah, that's what I thought. So whenever, um, Tom, whenever they're building up, whenever a, a dimensionally non-conforming structure is expanded even vertically, the expansion needs to be in line with the setback. And that's why a variance is needed.
But i- is it not in line with the setback as it exists? Not, it's not changing, correct?
Yeah, uh, if I may answer that, um, the building is already non-conforming in terms of the dimensional setback. So by adding the second floor, as Amy just mentioned, where the second floor now is becoming more non-conforming. So we have to seek dimensional relief for that second floor addition that's close to the property line.
Right, thank you. And putting it another way, you're, you, without the variance, you'd be extending the dimensional non-conformity up a story. So that's why the variance is needed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, board members, or? Okay.
Let me get this straight. Wait, was I, do you have a question?
Yeah, please.
You're adding a room on the second floor where there was a deck, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's expanding the, the house itself, square, no, not the square footage, but.
The living space of the house. The living space is being expanded.
Yeah.
But the footprint is not.
So this was a deck on top of the first floor or it was a deck? Oh, okay, so it was a deck on top of a living space? Does that make sense, Bill?
And there are no new decks that you're putting in?
None, we're just replacing the decks that are there, except for that second floor roof deck, that won't be, that'll be permanently removed.
Okay, but there was another deck, right?
Yes, there's a deck at the, at the lower level, that's gonna remain down at the lower level because that's our access.
But it's not gonna be attached.
It's not gonna be attached.
Okay.
You good, Bill?
Yeah.
Any other board members' questions? No? Does anyone care to make a motion?
Or I'll make the motion, was there any comments from the audience or is that it, Jess? Okay.
No one else?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the petition of William Harvey. Seventy-seven Quarry Road in Bridgewater, Connecticut, for dimensional variance. Under the zoning ordinance as follows, the applicant is seeking to elevate the existing dwelling. Five and a half feet in the same location, the existing south side deck will become detached. And the two hundred and twenty-four square foot west side deck will be removed and replaced, the north side dwelling and deck do not currently meet the side yard dimensional setback. The side yard setback is ten feet, the west side deck will be eight point one feet from the side property line. The dwelling will be eight and a half feet from the west side property line. Relief of one point nine feet is requested, lot size is six, sixty-eight thirty-two square feet. Dimensional variance is required per zoning ordinance, section four oh one. And section nine oh seven standards of relief, owner of the property is William A Harvey for premises located. Two peninsula roads, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, zero two eight seven nine. Assessors map ninety-three one lot seventy zone R twenty. The following individuals spoke as representatives for the applicants, Jeff, Jeff Balch and William Harvey, Jeff is. A, an engineer, I believe, a surveyor.
Professional lands surveyor, yep.
Very, okay, and there was no one speaking in opposition. The fall, the materials mentioned by the chairman were entered into the record, which were a, a lock card and site plan. The board finds that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure. And not the general characteristics of the surrounding area and is not due to any physical or economic disability of the applicant. The existing structures in the area are tightly packed, it's, you know, they're non-conforming on the setbacks. The board finds that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant and does not result primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize. Greater financial gain. The addition is in place, it's consistent with the rest of the house, they're simply raising it up and. Using an, you know, an already upgraded septic system to move forward. The board finds that the granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance. Or the comprehensive plan upon which the ordinance is based, because again, it is the same use, it's an elevation of an existing structure. The board finds that the relief, that the relief to be granted is the least relief necessary. Because the release itself at one point nine feet is the least and essentially already existing because of the. The structure becoming enclosed and becoming living space, it only adds to the existing non-conformity and relief necessary. The board finds that the hardship suffered by the owner of the subject property, if the dimensional variance is not, if not granted amounts. To more than a mere inconvenience because really, they don't have anywhere to go, there's no, there's not much room on either side. To expand, and again, they're, they're keeping it consistent with everything in the area. And they're elevating it to stay above the floodplain, which is pretty smart, so with that, I would move to approve the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mark, can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Rosen, second. Any other, any other discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Mark?
Aye.
Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Mr. Jurzak?
Aye.
Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta, aye, the motion passes, good luck.
Thank you.
Problem, take care. There are folks here for Maureen and John Cardinal. Yes, okay, so this is the petition of Maureen and John Cardinal of eighteen De Sano Drive, Narragansett, Rhode Island, zero two eight eight two. For a dimensional variant under the zoning ordinance as follows, the applicant is seeking to demolish an existing. Seven hundred and fifty square foot dwelling and replace it with a fifteen hundred square foot dwelling with attached two hundred and forty square foot deck. The current dwelling does not meet the front yards, front or rear yard setbacks, the required setbacks for the front and rear property line is twenty-five and thirty feet respectively. The proposed dwelling will be located thirteen point nine feet from the front line. And eighteen point one feet from the rear property line, relief of eleven point one and eleven point nine respectively. Is requested, the lot size is fifteen thousand square feet. A dimensional variance is required per the zoning ordinance, section four zero one, schedule of dimensional regulations. Section nine zero seven standards of relief, the owner of the property is John and Maureen Cardinal for premises located twenty-nine Cook Avenue, South Kingstown, Rhode Island. Assessors map forty-three dash one lot twenty-four and is zoned R twenty. And with this property, we have the following documents submitted, which is their application with the narrative signed and dated September fourteenth, twenty twenty. The owner authorized form signed and notarized September fourteenth, twenty twenty. The assessors map field card map forty-three dash one lot twenty-four. Construction documents one, two and three, prepared by Dean. Dandrea dated August twenty twenty, the proposed site plan prepared by Michael A Fontaine. PLS dated September third, twenty twenty. Also, we have a radius ma- map, two hundred foot of butters list, legal notice and certified mailing receipts with the affidavit of mailing. And who is here for this application?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
In addition, we did receive correspondence from Nancy Moore.
From Nancy?
Came in recently.
Okay, great, yes. Okay. And who is here for this petition?
I'm John Cardinal, I don't know if you can hear me?
We can, actually, very well.
My name is.
Are both of you gonna speak or just yourself, Mr. Cardinal?
I'd like my wife to also speak, but because of our audio setup, she has to come in by phone, so I don't know if Jess can allow her to.
Yeah. She.
Maureen, is your number ending in eight, nine, one?
Yes.
Great.
Okay, I'll set, my name is John, J O H N, Cardinal, C A R D I N A L.
Great. And are you on, Maureen?
I am.
Fantastic, so spell your name as well, Maureen?
Maureen Cardinal, C A R D I N A L.
Great, and do the two of you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
I do.
Excellent, so go ahead, let us know what you guys like to do.
Okay.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and all the members of the committee for reconvening this week, who were on last week. We bought this property in two thousand fifteen with the intention of retiring it. We weren't sure if remodeling was an option or not compared to replacing. The structure was built in nineteen forty-six and it's definitely seen in better days. It's on concrete block piers, about four feet off the ground, and those piers, like the rest of the building, are in rough shape.
Mr. Cardinal? Sorry, hang on one second, Maureen, do you mind if you can just mute yourself during that, because we're just hearing it twice, that's all.
Got it.
Okay, great, thank you, go ahead, John, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That'll help me too, because I was hearing my own voice.
Yeah, okay, great.
Okay, so when Hurricane Sandy hit in two thousand twelve, we didn't own the property, but we've been told that the water reached the bottom floor. It's currently in a FEMA area where it should be twelve feet below, the rafters should be above twelve feet, and they're well below that, eight feet below that. So I think that water is responsible for some of the damage, which is there now and some of the structural issues that I mentioned before about the piers and whatnot. The building is settled in several different ways. So that floors aren't level, some windows won't open, there are air gaps in other places. You put a marble in the middle, it's gonna roll some direction, it's not always clear which one. We've spoken with several builders and they're all, they all recommended replacing the structure rather than trying to remodel. The repair costs would be not worth what you end up with in the end. Attempting to raise up the structure to the appropriate height, several builders thought that the structure was not likely to survive that operation. So the lot is unique in that it's very wide, it's two hundred and fifty feet wide and sixty feet deep. The east side of the property has some wetlands, so in our conversations and our process with the CRMC, they specified the structure should be moved. To the east, which for us is to the right as you're facing the building from the street. We can meet, we can locate the structure there and meet the side setback requirement. However, because the property is only sixty feet deep and there is a twenty-five foot in front and thirty foot in back setback. That leaves five feet, which is quite narrow for any home, as sure you're aware. Regarding, regarding the CRMC, they have given us a positive preliminary determination. And if we receive zoning approval, we'll apply to them for the final ascent. On their part. The existing home is thirty foot wide and twenty-five foot deep at its widest point, and so to provide more living area, we designed a home that is forty foot wide. But did not increase the depth. So while we need a variance to build the home as shown in the plans, we are not proposing to increase the encroachment relative to what the existing structure has. We are increasing the square footage of the living area from approximately seven hundred and fifty square feet to nineteen hundred and twenty square feet. The agenda item says fifteen hundred, but somehow that got altered from our application, which had the correct value. So the building would be nineteen twenty, basically forty by twenty-four times two. Most of the growth comes from adding a second floor, the current home only has one, one floor. The resulting home, we think, is still a modest size. Our two closest abutters support our plan, including the abut to the rear, that's the Nancy Moore who is at. Twenty Han Avenue, which is behind us, which is one of the areas where we would have a dimensional variance. She wrote, as I said, she wrote a letter of support, which I believe you have in front of you now. Regarding the specifics of the dimensional variances we are requesting, we are proposing a home that would be seventeen point nine feet from the boundary in the front. But front steps reduce that to thirteen point nine feet. So that means we need eleven point one feet of relief in the front. The home would be eighteen point one feet from the rear boundary, making the needed relief there eleven point nine feet. The home has town sewer and town water, so there isn't any septic issue or anything like that. We're expanding, I guess this is one personal note, we're expanding because our children live far away and they have their own families now. And we want to have enough square footage so that someone can come visit us, right now, the existing home has a, a small. One bedroom and, and not nearly enough room to, to have children, grandchildren come visit you. The new home would be compliant on height, you know, the, the architect builder, excuse me, the site designer plan or whatever. Is aware of those regulations and made sure we fit that way. And I guess lastly, we have socialized the idea with our neighbors and we don't anticipate any, any objections, although we'll see if anyone has, has come to, to speak tonight. So thank you for your time and we're happy to answer any questions you have for us.
Okay, great, well, thank you, John, so I'm gonna read this in from your neighbor, it's dated October twenty-first, twenty twenty. It says, Maureen and John, this is in regards to your request for a dimensional variance for the building of a new residence at twenty-nine Cook Avenue. As your closest neighbor with a budding property, I have no objection to this request. Best regards, Nancy Moore, twenty Han Avenue in Wakefield. So, okay, Maureen, did you want to add, add anything to that?
No, I'm good, but if I have to, you know, it's appropriate for me to answer a question as opposed to John, I will unmute.
Okay, thank you. Board members, questions for the applicant? Well, I'll make, the first observation is the fact that you only have, and I'm sorry, my eyes aren't as good as they used to be. It seems like you only have eight feet that you can build in or so technically on this lot, why?
It would be, it would be five feet, I believe, are you going to talk about depth or width?
Well, i- if we're looking at the, the, on either image, the existing condition to the proposed site, we have this dotted line that shows our setbacks in the center of the. Plan by the Fontaine. And it shows your rear setback and your front setback and your side yard setbacks.
Right.
And it seems like that there's only a few feet in between the front and rear setback.
Yes, that's exactly correct, the front setback is thirty, twenty-five feet and the rear setback is thirty. The lot is sixty feet deep, so if you subtract fifty-five from sixty, you get five feet.
Excellent, so you cannot feasibly build a five-foot wide house, pretty much?
Not unless you become two-dimensional.
Well, come on, after studs and drywall, you'll have like three feet left, you're fine. Okay, so that makes it rather difficult to fit within, to have any less than that. And in terms of the size of the existing house, the depth of the house. You're proposing the depth of the house to be about twenty-four feet?
Correct.
And you find that that twenty-four feet is the least relief necessary, that you don't necessarily. You know, you, you can't work with fifteen feet or, or twenty feet or?
Well, we, we attempted with the architect last year to build a home that fit the current. Footprint of the main footprint of the home, which is twenty by thirty, but the home does actually have a section that's almost twenty-five feet deep now, it's twenty-four and change, I think. So we use that twenty-four feet from the existing home as kind of a starting point for that. And trying to go any深入to that, it was very difficult to, to have a home that had any additional square footage. Because we were also fighting with the, the restraint on the, I guess, east side, which is where the wetlands are. And we had to move back from there, so we couldn't build a sixty-foot wa- you know, wide home that's, you know, ten or twelve feet deep. Because then we'd be too close to the wetlands, so we kinda had to push it to the right or to the e- to the west and keep it about the same depth.
So that's, that's where this other long dash dot line represents is the wetland setback. On here, that fifty-foot setback where the southeast corner of the house attaches to.
This, this is kind of an arced line, it begins, you know, at the, at the top of the new plan. Arcs out to reach the home and then goes across and down to the bottom, that is forty feet, which the CRMC. You know, gave us, so if you see this line here, I don't know if you can see my screen?
We can't, but, so. We can't, but, so, are you sharing your screen or Jessica? That's you, right?
That's me.
So could you put your cursor perhaps right at the back of the house? You see that, that, it's like the long dash dot going vertical, and then it curves. You're a little bit left, a little bit left. Keep going, keep going.
Right there.
That line, yep. What does that line represent?
That was the forty-foot setback from the wetlands.
Okay, so that's why you're positioning the home to be just at that point, starting there?
If we go any further, then we started to need a, I think we're, was in a foot of needing a variance on the other side if we go any further back.
So really, this is sort of the best position for the house, and you're not, I mean, relative to before and after, the house right now is about fifteen point eight from the front yard, and you're proposing about thirteen foot nine? Is that right? Or no, seventeen point nine?
That would be the house, yeah, seventeen.
Seventeen nine, so you're actually getting a little farther. And then the rear setback is currently seventeen point six, and you're proposing about eighteen point one? Is that right? Okay, so in both instances, your relief is a little less. So you're actually not needing as much as you had previously.
Correct.
Okay, and then you're accommodating the wetland setback of the forty feet, which determines your position to the west. Okay? And any septic changes or anything like that?
The home is a town sewer and town water.
Okay, great. Board members, any questions?
Just a point of clarification in favor of my Tom Daniels. The CRMC setback that you referred to, Mr. Chairman, looks like it's a fifty-foot setback on a drawing. I know you, there was some testimony from the applicant that it was a forty-foot setback, but it's indicated as a fifty-foot setback. So that would place the deck inside the fifty-foot setback in the corner of the house on a line. Am I reading that correctly or no?
Mr. Daniels, you're correct. I misspoke earlier. I, we've always talked about forty because that's the distance to the deck, but the pro, the structure, the building is fifty, and the deck is, you know, at its closest point forty, I think.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
No, I'm sorry for getting that wrong before.
Sure you don't want to speak now, Maureen? So, okay, board members, any other questions?
Bill Rosen here, one quick question. CRMC, they have a fifty-foot setback from the wetland?
From the wetland, yep.
And so you're going to go with a forty-foot? Have they, has, have you contacted CRMC to find out if they're okay with that?
Yes, they've given us a preliminary determination, a positive preliminary determination, based on this plan that you see in front of you. I couldn't quote their policies, but decks are different than homes. So that, I believe, is the reason why they gave that determination. We don't know for sure until we get, you know, their final ascent, I guess is what they call it, but we believe that to be, you know, they told us if you get a determination, that generally means you get the ascent, so we're hoping that that is enough.
So you're gonna have to go get approval from CRMC, right?
Yeah, and they require us to have zoning approval before we do that.
Okay.
And this is the, this is the plan they used. This is the plan they were, okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Amy.
No problem. This is Amy. So whoever's making the motion can indicate that it will be a conditional approval under Section nine oh eight with a two-year expiration.
Just clarification, I think I understand that that means conditional on CRMC approval.
Right, and when a zoning applicant has another step with the federal or state agency beyond this board, we give you an extra year to act on the zoning with the understanding that sometimes it takes time to get those additional approvals.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy. Board members, any other questions for the applicant? No? Jessica, is there anyone out there that wishes to speak on behalf of this petition?
No one has raised their hand.
And I'm sorry, Maureen and John, is there was no one else you wanted to bring forward for this?
No, the other abutter, his name is Frank Giordano. He said he might be on, but he didn't commit. He was in favor, but of course I can't, you know, speak directly for him.
Yeah, I don't see anyone by that name on. I do see the woman who wrote the letter she is on, but she's not choosing to comment, which is fine.
That's fine. Okay.
I can't comment. I'm trying to comment.
Jessica, was there someone?
One second. Mr. Shartier, if you wish to speak, you need to unmute yourself. Okay, so this is another applicant who apparently wishes to make a comment.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
My name is John Shartier. I live at forty-three Han Avenue. I'm approximately eighty, eighty-five feet directly south of the property owned by Maureen and John Cardinal. I've lived, I'm sixty-six years old, and I've been on this property since I was six. I used to cut the grass there, and I would just like to go on record saying that I am one hundred and ten percent in support of Maureen and John's plans for that property.
Wow, that's fantastic. Well, thank you, sir. Does any other board members have any questions for Mr. Shartier? Great, well, thank you very much. So, anything else from John or Maureen? Guys, right? Okay, I feel like you need to break out and song with such a headspace, but. So, board members, any other questions for the petitioners or discussion? Nope. Anyone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, Richard Zach. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the petition of Maureen and John Cardinal, okay, with regard to property located at twenty-nine Cook Avenue, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, okay? What they're looking for here is a dimensional variance, okay? They are interested in demolishing the existing home that's on the site and replacing it with a little larger home, okay? And due to the nature of the lot itself, it's a very thin lot, okay? It's only sixty feet wide, all right? They're asking for a front and rear property line variances. The present front and property line requirements are twenty-five feet for the front and thirty feet for the rear, okay? They're proposing thirteen point nine feet from the front and eighteen point one feet from the rear. Therefore, they will need eleven point one feet relief from the front property line and eleven point nine feet relief from the rear property line, okay? The reason, as I said, the reason they want to do this is they want to replace the house itself, all right? Both John and Maureen Cardinal spoke. They explained in great depth what they're gonna build there. They told us all about CRC, CRMC requirements. They described the present structure in great detail. It's in terrible shape, okay? And also, the height is such that every time you have a big storm, okay, we have flooding potential, okay? The property itself is only two hundred and fifty by sixty feet long. It's on town sewer and town water, okay? The closest abutters are in favor of the applicant's petition. For that matter, the rear yard of butter, I believe it is Nancy Moore, wrote a letter in support, all right? And Mr. Cardinal made a representation, and a gentleman friend, Giordano, who I believe is on the front yard of butter across the street, I think, okay, is also in support. We also had a person call in, a John Shartier, okay, who lives eighty-five feet south of the premises. He was in favor of exactly what the Cardinals wanted to do, all right? I'm gonna make reference at this point and make part of my motion the proposed site plan, okay, by Fontaine Land Surveyors, okay, dated nine, three, two thousand twenty, as well as the house designs. There's one, two, three, four, five pages by Narragansett Design Services, all right? I dated August of two thousand twenty, okay? Pursuant to our ordinance, okay, specifically Section nine oh seven A one, okay? I ask that this variance be granted. I make note that all of the requirements of said sections seem to be met as follows. Number one, the Cardinals have clearly shown a hardship here, which is specific to this lot alone due to the fact that the lot is only sixty feet wide and due to the front and your and rear yard requirements of our zoning ordinance, okay? In order for them to construct the house on the premises, it could be no greater than five feet wide, which is impossible, and therefore they clearly have a hardship, all right? This action is clearly not brought about by any result of their prior action. They purchased the house, okay, it's there now. The present structure is in very bad shape, okay? And it also is so low that it floods constantly. The variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area. Clearly, it will not due to the fact that they are replacing a broken-down structure with what looks to be a very nice home, okay, pursuant to the plans that they've submitted. It seems to be the least relief necessary. It is a modest-sized house. It is twenty-four by forty. They're not building a McMansion here, all right? Twenty-four feet is about as narrow as you can get if one would like to comfortably live in it, okay? And lastly, okay, if we do not grant this variance, they will be forced to build a house that is five feet wide, and that is more than a mere inconvenience, all right? Last thing, our attorney's comment. I make note that they will have a two-year expiration period due to necessary permits, and I guess it is Section nine oh eight, okay? All of that being said, I ask that the petition of John Cardinal and Maureen Cardinal, okay, for this variance be granted.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Drusak. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Daniels. Any other discussion? Hearing none? Mr. Jurzak?
Aye.
Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Mark?
Aye.
Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta?
Aye.
Motion passes. Good luck.
Thank you very much, everyone.
You're welcome. See, Maureen, that was easy. You didn't even have to talk. Great, thank you too. Thank you so much. So next, we have the petition of John and Lee Chertier of forty-three Han Ave of South Kingstown, Rhode Island, zero two eight seven nine for a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is proposing to construct a hundred and ninety-two-square-foot second-story deck attached to the existing single-family dwelling. The deck will be located along the rear property line on the southwest portion of the building. The deck will be located five feet from the rear property line. Required rear setback is thirty feet. Relief of twenty-five feet is requested. The lot size is twelve thousand six hundred and thirty-two. A dimensional variance is required per zoning ordinance, Section two zero seven, non-conforming lot of record building setback requirements in Section nine oh seven standards of relief. The owner of the property is John and Lee Chertier for premises located at forty-three Han Ave, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, Assessor's Map forty-three dash one, Lot sixteen, and is zoned R twenty. And for documents, we have the application signed and dated September sixteenth, two thousand twenty. Owner authorization form signed and notarized September sixteenth, two thousand twenty. Photo log with pictures, one, two, three, and four. Site plan S one prepared by Marcel Fontenault Jr., dated December fifth, two thousand five. Radius map, radius map, two hundred feet of butter list, legal notice and certified mailing receipts with affidavit of mailing. We also have four correspondences from Helen Donato dated September tenth, Nancy Moore dated September fifteenth, Robert Warren dated September eleventh, and Susan Echol dated September tenth. And all four of those letters are letters of support for the zoning variance, or they are another of support, no objections, and support. So with that, I believe we have the applicants here?
Yes, you do.
Okay, great. And please spell your name.
My name is John. Last name is Chertier, C-H-A-R-T-I-E-R.
And do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and are you gonna be the only one speaking, John?
I believe so.
No, I might speak too.
Okay, and you must be Lee.
I am.
Okay, and Lee, can you spell your name? And do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great. Go ahead. Tell us what you'd like to do.
Well, we have a deck on the south side of our house that is approximately six and a half feet wide, and we would like to expand that by eight feet out and twenty-four feet across. The primary reason for our request is that we have a very large family. And on Sunday afternoons, everybody tends to come here for dinner. And with COVID, we would like to have the opportunity to offer that outside, that outside meal. We don't think it's, it's, this is much of a request. While on one hand, the extension would bring us to five feet from the rear property line, we are already only nine feet from the rear property line because of the very, very narrow lots down here in Middlebridge, as you heard the Cardinals just talk about, and the zoning setbacks as a result of that. So we're just simply looking to extend our deck. It would be, it would be a two-level deck, first floor, second floor, nothing enclosed. Would just give us additional space to enjoy our property with our family.
Thank you. Jack and Lee, do you have anything to add?
I don't think so. I do think, though, that Jack made a good point that it is a two-story, that the existing porch is two stories. And so to keep with the integrity of the design of the house, we would like this to be two stories as well. I think in the original, yes, there's a photo of it. I think in the original, what you read originally, it said that it was a second-story addition. But it's actually what you're looking at in that photo. It's both stories would come out eight feet.
If the members of the board can see that photograph, you can see the white boards laying on the ground. That would be the extension of the deck. It also does not exceed It it also does not exceed out closer to the property line than our already than our stone patio already does, for which we were giving zoning variance years and years ago when we built the house.
And and Amy, that's that's not a problem, or it's not a problem for them to say in the notice that it's a second story, because if there's a second, there's a first.
I don't see that as an issue.
Okay.
We should also say that we did speak with a woman named Tracy at CRMC, sent all of this information to her as well. And she, because we had met with the building inspector's office, and they suggested that we reach out to them to anticipate any issues that they might have. And Tracy assured me that it looked pretty routine, and that if the zoning board approved it, she believed that it was something that they would easily approve as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. Board members, questions?
Tom Daniels, question for Amy. Going back to a previous discussion, with the hundred and ninety-two feet second story deck enclosed by a fence, or I should say a railing, and a roof be considered living area?
This is within, this is not within coastal community?
It is, yes.
Oh, it is. Okay, so it's living area if it's both enclosed and covered.
Amy, this this isn't in one of the coastal community overlay districts, if that's the.
This is not?
It's not.
Okay, so then, um, I think the rule outside the district is slightly different, correct, Jamie? I think it's it's considered living space. Well, you you tell me, Jamie. Is the is the rules different for property outside the coastal overlay district?
Yeah, we we wouldn't regulate, or
Thought so.
There wouldn't be any issues with living or non-living space, but we wouldn't consider this, or neither. I don't think the tax assessor would either.
Right, I thought so. And and Tom, that's why the coastal overlay district has its own definition of GLFA. To be a little more restrictive on what's considered living space in that overlay district.
So, there's no, excuse me, no issue with expansion beyond a hundred and fifty square feet here? No, no. No issue with expansion. No, as look, okay, without the setbacks and lot coverage would be the the two things we'd be looking at. Okay.
That good, Mr. Daniels? Yep. Board members, any other questions?
Yeah, one one question, Rick Chairzak here, I guess, to Mr. Chartier. How close is the house on, I guess, the the butter is lot nine? I'm not sure who that is. I'm looking at your site plan. How close, how close is, where is the house on that property?
The the closest existing butter that we have is Mrs. Helen DiDonato. And our property, as it sits right now, is nine feet, eight inches off that back property line, and that's the end of the rear stairs. And if you can see the 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 actual, the drawing of the the structural, the foundation, the foundation is thirteen feet.
No, no, but I I mean, and how how close the the next door neighbor, is there no house on that's to the, I guess that's to the
To the south?
Yeah. Yeah, what's what's over there?
I can't give you an exact measurement.
Yeah.
I did provide photographs taken from where the existing deck would be looking south toward Helen DiDonato's property. It's approximately seventy-five feet.
Okay.
We have, there you go. That's that's it. And we have a a letter from Mrs. DiDonato supporting our our proposition completely.
Okay, thank you. That that's close enough for me. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Any questions? Nope. Okay. Do you, Jack or Lee, you guys have anything to add?
No, sorry, I do not. Unless you have any additional questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. I don't believe we do. Jess, is there anyone out there in the web sphere that cares to ask questions?
No one has raised their hand. Oh, wait a minute. Hold on, I do. Cardinals would like to speak.
All right.
All right, they can just unmute themselves. There you are.
Hello again. Now, this is John Cardinal. If you like, I can be sworn in again. I'm not sure if that's necessary.
No, we'll 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 consider you still sworn in. Not a problem.
So I just want to make a brief statement of support for their plan. We're about ninety feet away, I believe. I didn't measure it, but I I know John did, so I'll take his word for it. We are a hundred percent behind their their request. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you, John. Appreciate it. Anyone else, Jessica?
No one else.
So that's five support. So that's great. You have a good community there.
Yeah, we love it.
Good.
Our neighbors.
It's important these days. All right. Board members, any other questions for the applicants? No? Anyone care to make a motion, or? Jessica?
I'll make a motion, Rick Chairzak. Okay. This is a the petition of John and Lee Chartier, okay, with regard to forty-three Han Avenue, South Kingstown, Rhode Island. Okay. The Chartiers, both John and Lee came to us today, okay, and spoke. Okay. They're asking for a variance to construct a addition or addition to existing deck that they have. The additions are two-story. The addition will be eighty-eight feet by twenty-four feet. Okay, for a total of a hundred and ninety-two square feet, both on the first floor and the second floor. Okay. They they came, they explained their reasons for it. Okay, they explained that they have a large family, okay, and that they they would like to utilize the the expanded deck for family gathering purposes. Okay. They stated that the lot that their present home is built on is a very narrow lot. Okay, and therefore, they are restricted as to what they can do there. And they are therefore asking for this. What they're basically asking for is the deck will be located five feet from the rear property line. The required rear setback is thirty feet. So relief of twenty-five feet, okay, is requested. Okay. The lot size is twelve thousand six hundred and thirty-two square feet. All right. We had numerous neighbors, okay, submit either letters of support or letters stating they had no objection. Also, John Cardinal, who is also a close by neighbor called in support of the petition. Okay. I want to make reference to a site plan by Marcel Fontenault, F O N T E N A U L T Junior. Okay. Let's see, the date on that is December two zero zero five. I also want to make part of the motion one, two, three, four photographs, okay, where Mr. Chartier has very helpfully, by the way, laid out some white boards on these photos to show us where the premises, where the addition will be. And he further showed us in the fourth one, the photo of where the addition will be as compared to the closest of Butters' house. Okay. Pursuant to our ordinance, okay, specifically, nine oh seven A one. Okay. The hardship, okay, clearly is due to the limited nature of this lot. It's only, again, I believe, a sixty-three foot lot, and therefore the Chartiers are limited as to what they can do there to try to expand their living space. Okay. They have not done anything by their prior actions, okay, to necessitate or this variance, so they have not created the hardship, okay, clearly, by the very nature of what they're asking for. By doing this, they will not alter the general character of the surrounding area, for that matter. While looking at these pictures, the house looks very nice, and and with this further addition, I think it will look nicer. Okay. So it will, if anything, improve the general characteristics of the surrounding area. Okay. It seems to be the least relief that is necessary, because they're only asking for eight feet. It doesn't, it it doesn't seem like it's anything outrageous. Okay. And if we don't grant it, it will clearly result in more than a mirroring convenience, because they won't be able to do it. And therefore, they may not be able to have their family come and visit them during these difficult COVID times. All right. I see no public purpose for not granting this variance. Okay. And for that reason, I ask that the board, okay, vote in favor of my motion. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairzak. Can I get a second?
Second, Mr. Mark.
Second, Mr. Mark. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Chairzak.
Aye.
Mr. Mark.
Aye.
Mr. Daniels.
Aye.
Mr. Rosen.
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta, aye. Motion passes. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the committee. We thank you so much for your time.
It's our pleasure. It's the big bucks we make.
Thank you.
All right, so that was the last one, right? Is there any other business? I think we approved all the minutes and everything last time.
Yeah, we don't have any minutes. We just want to do November eighteenth attendance. I know Bill Mark had said he wasn't sure if he was going to be here, and I know Rick had mentioned that he may also not be available. So.
Okay, so does everyone know if that is the case?
I will be here.
You will?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, if he will be here, I will not be here. I don't I don't mean that. Mr. Mark, based on that, but I
I won't be here in December.
I listen, I will be out of town, and I and I like to look at the properties before I vote on them. So I will not be able to do that, so that I will not be here. Okay?
Okay, great, great. Well, thank you.
In all likelihood, it will not be December.
Okay.
But I will be here, Jessica.
Okay, perfect.
We could do this every month if you want, Bill. Vice versa.
You've given Casey two meetings to catch up, so hopefully that's all he needs.
I'll be here. I did want to ask Amy if, you know, if you had time to do that training prior to that one.
Yes, he absolutely will. I I was thinking about waiting till we had someone else on board, but I I'll send you an email. We'll we'll connect. It's easy enough to do Zoom or a call. And and I don't think you'll need much based on what I've seen, but sure, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, I mean, if you just want to do a brief call and then save the formal one, that's mine too.
Sure thing.
I think I can, I think I can get through it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Casey. All right, if there, if, does anyone have anything else they needed to discuss or bring up? Nope. So can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Jessica.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Jamie.
Yes.
Great night.
Good night, everyone. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Of course, Tom. See ya.